This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Budget Review Meeting and Budget Hearing for March 20th, 2018. To begin with this evening, we offer the opportunity for public participation. And I will make note as this is a budget review and budget hearing evening, we will offer public participation now and we will offer another opportunity for public participation at the conclusion of our executive budget proposal, which is going to be coming up shortly. So there are two opportunities. Any members of the public that are here this evening with us who wish to address the board in any matter or ask a question may do so. Please raise your hand and you'll be recognized. Seeing that we have no one this evening at this point to speak, Board, may we please have a motion to approve our agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We do have one item of business this evening prior to the presentation of our budget and that is the second read on two separate policies that we, I believe last meeting had it first read. So may we have a motion, please, for the second read on Policy 5660 under our school food service program?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marv and seconded by Andrea. You'll recall that we discussed this at the first read, that where the current food service policy 5660 had two recommended amendments that we discussed at the last meeting. One had to do with eligibility for Medicaid and one had to do with restriction of sweetened foods, both regarding language and changes to comply with current law. Does anyone have anything further on that policy at all? Then all in favor of second read?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then please a motion for approval of the second read for Policy 7222. This is a policy under our student section that has to do with diploma and credential options for students with disabilities.
So, second.
Moved by Julene and seconded by Andrea. And again, this, again, we discussed this policy also. This one I didn't hear either, but maybe I do. Yeah, the, a couple of different adjustments that we made, we actually made one at the first read if you might recall, but we did change one of the words to clearly define counseling where the term guidance had been used. But the policy itself clearly sets forth a couple of changes under credential options for students with disabilities. So I don't have anything additional further that came from staff or outside folks. Does anybody here have anything additional for that? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Then we move to the main event of the evening, presentation of the executive budget proposal for 2018-2019 from Dr. McGowan. Welcome.
Okay, call it the main event. It's not a masquerade or circus, but we're going to make it the main event.
The main focus of our evening.
Right. The executive budget proposal, after months and months of working through this, working with you, working with the community, gathering feedback, our budget makers, many of whom are here tonight, and I thank them for their work on this and Lou's financial leadership, Lou Laimo, our assistant superintendent, his very hard work to put together a budget proposal. We are now here to present this to you and talk a little bit about what went into the thinking around this specific proposal that we'll ask you to consider for adoption on April 10th. I'll touch on this later in the presentation, but hopefully with adjustments that are made after the state budget is agreed to at the end of the month and then that is for consideration by the voters on May 15th. Let's walk through it a little bit right now. The place that we start are the budget guidelines that you adopted all the way back September 12th, 2017. People were fresh from Labor Day, you were still tan, you were excited. The year had started, you said this is the type of budget we should be thinking about. And the first bullet is key, sustaining revenue sources. And down to the third from the bottom bullet, another key aspect around making sure that based on the current economic climate, we were understanding the balance between resources and what we could do differently. The other guidelines deal certainly with supporting each of our priority areas, taking a look at making sure that all of our students have the opportunity to maximize their potential in terms of being college and career ready. And we focused, second last from the bottom, on making sure we were ready to implement full day kindergarten and we're meeting our long-term goals around facility modernization and the infusion of instructional hardware. And finally, understanding the impact of the property tax cap on long-term financial planning, which we'll explain tonight as well. We feel that this proposal certainly meets these guidelines and all along that we followed through on what you had said about being our task beginning in September. The calendar certainly, again, started in September. January, we came to at the preliminary budget review. That was the rollover, so to speak, budget between what we thought our expenses might be and what the governor had proposed in terms of potential revenue. And of course, we along the way have had different checkpoints in terms of the property tax cap, our community budget forms where we've gathered feedback. We've also delivered the survey results as well at the last presentation last week and tried to come up with a proposal certainly that reflected the priorities of our community. And of course, we'll have on April 10th, ask you to adopt the budget. We will hopefully be able to make adjustments between now and that point. You are then adopting that, as I said before, just for the community then to consider. We have a hearing on May 8th and the community will vote on the 15th as well as hopefully coming for spaghetti dinner, thanks to Colanas. The factors that we've been assessing all along in this budget process, increased staffing demands. That's based on enrollment, that's based on student need, that's based on changes that the state has given us, changes in what is required of us. Our increases due to contractual agreements. We will be heading into the second year of three-year agreements with all of our employees who have a wide variety of collective bargaining agreements. Increases due to health insurance rates, premiums have increased. We also have more participants. As people have had healthcare changes in their family, we have more people coming onto the plan who are eligible for more family plans in the district. So we do have an increased amount of participation. And uncertainty in that market has certainly impacted health insurance rates. We are still far below the community rated plans in terms of cost and rate of increase. Our pension contribution rates are beginning to increase again. We got a little bit of a break on that last year in terms of the rate of increase, but that's beginning to pick up steam again. A little bit counterintuitive frankly when we look at that because it's based on a five-year rolling average of the market performance. And when the market is up right now, you would think that the rates would stay a little bit low. Our understanding is part of that is the pension system interprets there to be volatility in the market and they are not yet necessarily willing, from an actuarial perspective or an analysis of the market, willing to slow down on the contribution rates as much as we might like to see. Then of course, the multi-year impact of capital project, looking at when the debt service will come on and planning for that ahead of time. That involves looking at our capital reserve, contributions to the capital reserve made in these, from the general fund in the budget and how that can reduce the amount of the down payment essentially and that impacts our debt service later on. And then the planning for full day kindergarten, making sure that we have enough positions in the budget when we get to 2021 that we're not seeing a dramatic tax increase to start the program in terms of expenses from the general fund. We will be managing the debt service expenses, I mentioned. We would like to be able to build towards the program so the expense is not felt by taxpayers all at once. And of course, then the allowable tax levy growth at 2%. So the tax cap fluctuating each year, it's still just at about 2%, 2.32 is our tax cap number. But that impacts then the amount of revenue. Good thing for taxpayers, but certainly another constraint then on what we can plan on, on that side of the ledger. The factors that we've assessed and will continue to assess are the changes in mandated student plans, individual education plans specifically, elective demands as the high school goes through their scheduling process. And then any changes that come up in state and federal aids. So the state deficit, revenue projections did come back a little bit higher for the state. The Senate and Assembly both passed one-house budgets that were more positive in terms of revenue for schools. So we're hopeful that that will, when there's finally an agreed-upon budget, result in more state aid here. The proposed cap and reimbursable aids, which both houses have rejected, but it's still part of the executive proposal. Changes, potential changes in federal funding, which are completely unpredictable and we need to monitor that very carefully. And the impact of federal tax reform as well and what impact that has at least in community perception around the deductibility of state and local taxes and overall how that impacts our tax base here and their understanding of the budget and what their state and local taxes will mean now in their own personal filings. Just to give you a little sense around the tax cap trends where we are, if you take a look, the blue is the tax levy limit. The orange is what has been the actual tax levy in the district. So 4.29% back in 1213 was the limit, yet the levy we went out with was only 2.9%. 2014, 1314, 3.5 versus 2.6. And then in 2014-15, our levy limit was so very low, 1.8%. And we did that year ask the community to be able to go out over that limit. That's when we went over the tax cap. But remember, if you look at those two previous years, we were pretty well under the cap. Essentially, the model that we've developed over time is coming to our community and saying yes, we would much prefer to be tax cap compliant and the surveys indicate that our community would like us to be tax cap compliant, but that we've been honest about what our expenses are and what our needs are from the community to be able to continue to support program. And that resulted in us not going right up to the cap number those two years previous to going over the cap, but being honest about what we needed. Whereas most districts just go right at their cap number. Then the result was eventually we had to say, okay, this is the year that we need to go over. What we're seeing now, we've had an ability to be at our tax cap number. We're running out of that opportunity. In other words, we're at a point where this year, the theme in this budget that I'm presenting to you is being able to maintain the status quo. We're not proposing significant reductions. We're also though not proposing changes or increases or improvements to program that we have in the past. So we've been able to survive by being right at that cap number, but we're likely thinking that we will see that trend happen again in future years. Where when the cap number goes up, we might not have to go all the way to it, but we'll have to come close. But there will be years based on that debt service coming on where we may need to go over the cap. The point is, though, over time, we've been very respectful, only since 2012-13 needing to go over the cap once. And that was after two years of being pretty well under the cap. We think a lot now too in terms of the consequences of going over that cap. So the governor has certainly found ways to make this a much more coercive and consequence-laden process. And essentially what it comes down to is the refund that the state was giving you for the amount that you were increasing your levy year to year. So the property tax rebate would not be paid to communities, to schools, if they went over the cap. And what we're seeing right now is that, again, that credit would not be available when people go over. And this slide available on the website for people to review certainly shows you the star savings and the percentage of the basic star savings and how that's impacted over time as well. Our enrollment trends are important to point out. K through 5 trends. If we take a look at the arrow, this is just our planning going forward. So people understand as we watch this enrollment bubble go through the district. So if you look at first grade, the blue bar, that is the current first graders, right here. In 1718, they're just over 250 kids. But we're watching them over time and based on our enrollment trends and our formulas, we know that they will grow in second grade as more and more kids come back from full day settings. So in kindergarten, we have much smaller numbers and then kids start to come to us over time. And then that number grows again when we go, when kids go over to French Road and there's a natural break between the two buildings. So in third grade in 2019-20, that class will be over 275 students. And likely then in fourth grade in 2021, even higher, more on the 280-285 range and so on. So we plan for that over time. We just point out that that's where we see the trend going and we'll look at those enrollment bubbles as they expand. Right now, our current fourth grade, next year, so current fourth grade going into fifth grade, will be able to change the number of sections going forward. I'm sorry, not the current fourth graders, but the current fourth grade level configuration has 13 sections with 284 students. Next year, only 259 kids are slated to be in fourth grade, which means we can go down one section. The implication of that is that the grade level will have 23.52 on average students. I'm sorry, 21.6, my apologies. If we were reducing, we would go up to 23.52. And if you remember the budget survey results, our community is preferring to have smaller class sizes. So the only place we're seeing reduction right now at the K5 level is at that particular grade level, but we're still able to maintain this 21.6 ratio. Goes up slightly from where those third graders are now at 20.8, but just up to 21.6. The current fourth grade has 21.8. So again, we could absorb that reduction just fine without a dramatic change to the class size. At the 6th through 8th level, we're seeing again the current year, the blue bar right here, about 326 graders, a very, very big class. That class we anticipate to grow to 326 by seventh grade and then up well over, probably around 230-235 when they are in eighth grade. They are lovely and wonderful and we love more of them, but we are just planning for that over time and trying to understand what the implication is in terms of staffing. If we look over time then, what does that mean long-term for us? Over here, this blue line shows you our staffing ratio relative to the number of kids. So the orange bar is the number of FTEs or full-time equivalencies, the number of staff members. And the blue then is the average number of students per those staff members. So when we talk about slightly reducing positions right now, the point of this slide is to show our community and to show you that although we might be slightly reducing, we're still at a really good place relative to the number of people we have working with the number of kids that we have. Our student-to-teacher ratio remains very low and has only gone down over time. We are seeing though this uptick in enrollment, very different than other suburban districts, which is part of this foundation aid conversation. Our enrollment continues to go up and we believe we'll be over 1,275 students by 2023, up 140 students from where we are right now. So we continue to grow. Part of that will be the increase in numbers for full-day kindergarten students. It's just growth we see overall, understand the housing market and as our housing market turns over to newer families. This is the growth, again, very, very rare. I believe we are one of only two local suburban districts that continue to see growth, even minor growth, most are shrinking. So the places that we looked at in this budget for potential reduction, looking at the executive budget numbers, which were very, very low, are important to consider. We looked at instructional leadership and professional development, something that we think increases. Of course, the quality of instruction that we're providing to our students, very important component here, but we did look at, instead of looking at student programs, looked at these areas first. Our literacy and math coaching supports, again, that's professional development on the ground, directly with teachers, helping them improve their service to kids. Academic intervention service and support, summer school offerings. This is where we start to get to more student impact. Class size and course offerings, these are lower priority items in terms of our community's perception and our surveys and our anecdotal feedback. Lower priority for reduction, higher priority for keeping. The team teaching structure at the middle school is a very successful structure in terms of the schedule and being able to meet regularly the group of teachers to meet to talk about kids on a daily basis. We did certainly have to look at that, whether or not we could continue to support that model. Our opportunities for kids in the interscholastic athletic area, we had to look at as well. Other co-curricular, our club and extracurricular opportunities and our transportation services, looking at our walking distance, which we'll talk to you a little bit about, our transportation to private parochial schools on non-Brighton school days. We provide transportation, of course, by mandate, but we try and go over and above also for families that, that is the only service that they typically are receiving from us. But we had to look at the efficiency and ability to continue to support that expense. The financial summary, just taking a look at what our trends are over time. The blue line on the top is our original budget. With our reserve and our cap on reserves, our increase over time has been just 3%. But you see where the budget has gone up, again, a relatively moderate increase of 3% over time. The actual expenses though being just 2.6% have gone up. The spending going up 3 really speaks to the idea that that four tenths of a percent over time, and it's not four tenths each year, can be used to go towards reserves, which has helped us in capital project planning, the technology reserve, a variety of places, including retirement reserve, places that we've been able to set aside funds for any day and level off what our tax increases could over time. The tax levy has only had to go up an average of 2.3% over time, right at the number where our cap is this year. So again, compared to cost of living increases, compared to the commodities we're paying for at home, that 2.3% increase over time has been relatively moderate. Whereas state and federal aids have gone up about 3.7%. The challenge though with that 3.7% is it has gone up that much, but likely because we were doing a much better job getting reimbursable aids. So that's money spent. Every time the budget goes up based on, for example, transportation expenses, that goes up between 3 and 4%, well, that will impact that number because the state owes us that to be paid back the following year the way the reimbursable aids were. And then our budgeted fund balance and reserves over time have gone up $2.7 million, but you can see that's a relatively flat number. We've been able to maintain that. But we do every year use part of those reserves to offset increases in the tax levy. And then at the end of the year, we're able to divide that back up to go back into reserves at the end of the year. The object summary or the expense summary, we're at a $78.33 million proposed budget in this proposal, up 2.95%. Where does that break down? Salary is only going up 1.3%. That doesn't mean people's individual salaries are going up 1.3%. It varies based on the unit that people are in. It means spending in and on salaries across the entire district goes up 1.3%. So the cost for us to pay people will go up 1.3%, not per individual, but on the whole. That increase then is due to, or decrease or lack of increase being higher, people think their salary is going up higher, the number of people in that category. So different than the previous budget presentations where that was up over 3%, we've reduced the number of people that we're budgeting for salaries next year. We have frozen staff increases. Any of the proposed staff increases that were part of the original proposal given to you, our preliminary budget, are not included in this now. We've eliminated all new staffing other than health and safety, potential staffing. All other new staffing has been reduced in this proposal. In the benefit area, we're up 5.7%. That's due to those insurance increases, the rate increases and the number of people participating. But again, because we're anticipating hiring less people, not adding new people, having less people in there, that is kept to just a 5.7% increase. Our spending on BOSI services will be down $76,000. We've done some work to trim in those areas and cap some of the program participation that we anticipate. So we're down $76,000. And in supplies and services, an increase of just $629,000. That's an increase, again, $629,000 across a $78 million budget. Four school buildings, one administrative building, and all the material supplies that go into the cost of doing business each and every day. That's a very, very modest increase, given the increase in the expense for each of those items that we're paying for. Just a couple of the highlights of the specific lines. And again, this is all provided for the community to go through in detail and explained in the budget newsletter. We'll just run through a few of those tonight. I already pointed out the top two in terms of salary and benefits and the decrease in BOSIs. Some minor increases, when you break these down then around instructional materials and services, those are up 8.9%. And those would include everything, including textbooks, the materials that we have to purchase, program adoption, that would all go into that, about a $350,000 increase. Transportation services, we contract our transportation. Those agreements are in place. And that also has to do with the contract transportation that we provide for very specific transportation, given the particular students. And as those needs increase or as a student moves into the district with additional transportation needs, that $137,000 is a pretty small increase relative to what the potential is in that area. We continue to work with our provider to be as efficient as we possibly can, but again, that's a pretty standard expense. And then our debts and transfers, and it's just our regular debt service that we're able to transfer into reserves for future expenses as well. Overall, again, that's spending increase of 2.95%. Little more specific as to what the percent of total that is. So 48% of the total are salaries, so 48% of that spending. 28% is benefits. Again, we're a people-driven business. We don't run away from this. We very quickly say we should be spending the lion's share of the funding in the district on people. That's who does the work. Share is necessary, but it's not teaching a child. We want to be investing in the people that we're working with. So yes, our expense is 75% people and we think that's a good thing. The recommendations to balance the budget. So how did we reconcile anticipated revenues and I touch on a couple of these things with potential expenses? The full-time equivalency freeze, so in other words, no new hiring other than for health, safety and security. We have reserved some funds for additional security as the safety committee will review our plans in every building. We have right now ongoing work with safety committee representatives, Lou Laimo, Brighton Police Department representatives going to each building to talk to staff members, what they see and what other improvements we can make to already well-established, well-practiced, well-designed plans. But we have reserved some money in case there are additional improvements that we would like to make going forward in the safety area. And then a minor increase around one of the buildings and nursing support to make sure there's full-time equivalency across the board and enough coverage for the health and safety needs in each building. We're looking at scaling our staffing based on enrollment trends. Again, that's going back to that example in fourth grade, reducing a section because we can maintain a small class size and we don't continue to need that additional staff person. Reducing our overtime allocation for operations and maintenance. We'll be looking very carefully then at access to the buildings on evenings and weekends, providing a set amount of overtime. And then once that overtime is used, planned for, we won't be able to go over and above that or make special arrangements. We're going to have to be a little more rigid about how some of those things are planned for. Looking at increasing our reliance on federal grants to reduce pressure on the general fund. This is one of the areas where we are taking a chance. We're not gambling with people's jobs or lives, but we are putting more into federal grants that we know over time could dissipate because of the lack of predictability with the federal government at present. So we recognize that we need to make sure later on, if we're putting programs into grant programs that run out, we're able to support them in the general fund. So we're very cognizant of that as well. We're deferring some of our planning for full day K as we've been able to budget several positions going forward to make sure by 2021, we have enough positions in the budget. We don't want to also be reserving positions and then reducing spending on current programming for the future. So we're not able to continue some of that planning in this year's budget. We have what we have already saved going forward and the positions that we're already designating in that area. We would like to be able to revisit that in future years, but for this year, we're essentially hitting pause. We feel like we're still on track, but there will be an implication later on in having to make up that time and make up that funding available for those positions. We're implementing more program caps on the BOSI programs, as I mentioned, the ACAD program in particular. We feel like based on enrollment trends, we can do that and we'll be making sure students get the program they need, but no different than capping some of our electives, which we will also end up doing as a result of not having the same flexibility in spending and in staffing. That in and of itself is an elective-type program and we will have to just cap our participation in it. Our co-curricular activities, extracurricular activities are under analysis right now, looking at clubs that may not be as active as others and making decisions about what we can continue to support or what we need to make adjustments to in the future. Making sure there are enough opportunities for kids, but perhaps collapsing some clubs and kind of finding ways for them to combine their efforts when they have similar types of activities going on. We're limiting our equipment budgets to those that are maintaining the current program, so not adding new. Tightening up certainly in our risk provisions in the areas in the budget where we have margin. We are certainly now much closer, when I mentioned before, that 3.0 in terms of the spending that was planned versus the actual spending. That gap between 3.0 and 2.6 is going to close over time. So there's less to be able to go back into reserves. That will affect our ability to put money back into our savings. And defer our funding for future debt service. That's the same point, putting less towards our capital reserve that could offset our future expenses, but we're concerned about being able to maintain programming in the present. So thinking that, again, these are not drastic and dramatic events that will cause us major issues next year necessarily, but we need to all as a group be aware of the implication of having to go back to these items. Like deferring new gutters, like deferring new windows, like deferring a new roof. It doesn't go away, those expenses will still be there. Planning for it certainly helps, but there's months when you can't put money in your savings account and you still have those expenses coming up. Well, right now, we're at that month we can't put money in the savings account. We just need to realize we're going to have to go back to that eventually and walk into this knowing that will be a big part of it. What are some of the factors impacting salary and benefits? The large share of our spending is in the teaching area. We'd just like to point that out, 65% of that spending. And the 1718 budget breaks down the health insurance pensions, payroll taxes and other. Just gives you a sense of the summary of what goes into that expense overall and where is it going. Again, the vast majority of it to teaching positions because that's where most of our staffing should take place. We have a relatively small support staff, particularly compared to our neighbors, a very small administrative staff and the other places in terms of instructional supervision substitutes. Again, small part of the puzzle, 65% of the spending is on our teaching staff, which is where it certainly should be. Some of the factors impacting the BOSI budget, we mentioned that that is down $76,000, just to break that down for you. We've reduced the amount that we're relying on their signing up for some of their business and technology services. Some of their professional development program, programming we've reduced as well. The participation in some special education programs will be down 3.6%. Same with ACAD and the instructional technology programming. The transportation increase, I mentioned to you before some of these transportation increases. This is up $197,000 and that's specifically in the area of BOSI transportation, which is for particular students that require a different type of transportation provided through BOSI. And that's an expense that we should be paying for, but it is an increase of $200,000 to be And that's an expense that we should be paying for, but it is an increase of two hundred thousand dollars to be aware of. Just to point out, pardon me, the special ed contracts and tuitions, up fifteen point one percent. The state has a rate-setting unit. Those special ed providers go back to that rate-setting unit, ask them to set their rates or increase their tuition. We're seeing for one provider in particular, a very significant increase in the tuition. It's not necessarily the number of kids that will be going there, but it is an increase in the tuition. So our spending in that area is required to go up fifteen point one percent. We don't that, we don't point that out to pit regular ed versus special education, one child's program versus another. But just for you to be aware as a board, that that expense is going up that much, and that's due to an increase in the tuition. Which is, if it was found that way by the rate-setting unit, certainly must have been verified that that's the expense that that provider is incurring and that they needed to increase that rate. They're relatively stubborn about increasing those rates, and so that's certainly a necessary expense. And then our debt service going up six point six percent, and our contract transportation overall going up three point three percent that we wanted to point out to you. I do want to make mention, because people will see a number jump off the page, of an increase of eighteen point nine percent in the business administration area. That is an increase to the costs of our audits, the internal and external audit. So those are just simply the expenses over time. We do RFPs for those programs, and we've been able to budget lighter on those over time, but to correct and true up in that area and make sure we're prepared for audits next year, which we are required to do every year. That expense is up simply seventeen thousand dollars, but the percentage is what might jump off the page to people, so make sure you're aware of that. It's not for anything special for Lou, I promise you that. He promises you that. I know the principals are all over that really wondering how much exactly it was, but it is audits. Those are special for Lou, actually. The revenue sources, sixty seven percent comes from property taxes. This fact is not lost on us and needs to be pointed out very, very often. The ratio is exact opposite for many districts, but in our community, the people here are paying the lion's share of the tab. Sixty seven percent is being paid by local property taxes. So when there is a lack of state aid or not fulfillment of the promise of the state, in this area right here, the orange part of this pie chart, it goes right to property taxes. Which is why we have such a significant question, concern, problem with this over and over again, because you're already as a community paying for such a lion's share of kids' education here. Yes, it's your responsibility, but it is the state's constitutional responsibility to provide for the free, appropriate public education of kids in the state. So we get concerned about this lack of support for that when it is their responsibility to do that. It is not supported at the level that you would think it would be by some of the rhetoric you hear politically around us. And still, local property taxpayers are paying for most of it. To that same point, we want to point out this issue around foundation aid. So in previous years, we had a pretty protracted conversation, passionate conversation, about state aid. And it's really important for people to understand that last year, when Fight for Brighton and advocates in this district, especially in including you, spending time in Albany, making the case, district staff members making the case, community members making the case, having a great forum here with Assembly Leader, Majority Leader Morelli. Working very closely with Senator Robach as well, we achieved something very significant, increasing our aid. It was an increase of one point one million dollars, illustrated by the green tri, the green arrow right here. This full bar on the bar chart is what we should be getting in terms of state aid, all the way up to the top of the orange. So in seventeen eighteen, that would have been just under fourteen million dollars. Why do we say we should be? The foundation aid formula, which is the general formula to provide aid to schools. It's not transportation aid, it's not building aid. Those are categoricals, those are very specific for those expenses. Foundation aid is the general support. Used to be called general or basic aid. It's called foundation aid. The formula is different for, well, it's a standard formula, but everybody's numbers are different. So the number of kids you have, the number of kids with special needs you have, the number of kids who speak English as a second language that you have, the number of kids you have who are living in poverty, different for every district. So the administration of a large aid, social support program to be done consistently, to be done fairly, is negotiated between two parties, in two houses and an executive. And Republicans think one thing, Democrats think another, Senate thinks one thing, Assembly thinks the other, the governor thinks something else. They come up to, with an agreed-upon formula to administer the large amount of money that they supply to schools. And it takes into account all these factors. One group wants to, to have this count a little bit more, the other group likes this to count a little bit more, but essentially, they come up with an agreement. They are not following that agreement, and they haven't for years and years and years. So if they were following the agreement, our district would be getting, right up here, over fourteen million dollars, or, I'm sorry, this current year, just under fourteen million dollars. We know what our numbers are, we know what the formula would tell us, yet we're only getting all the way down here about seven and a half million dollars. Well, five, every five hundred thousand dollars is one percent on the levy. So can you imagine how much we could reduce our levy, levy, if we were actually getting what the state's own formula tells us we should be getting? Now, to point out the importance of what happened last year, we were far less. One point one million dollars was a pretty big jump for us to get us into a better place. But now, if we put all the other districts up against our bars right here, we'd look very similar. So our neighbors are seeing the same gap, the same lack of state funding, the same not, lack of fulfillment of the promise, and they'd be right about in the same place. So we did take a big jump, but all it did was get us to the same place that the other, that other districts are at, which is the same jeopardy of not getting what we're supposed to be getting from the state. So yes, it solved a problem for a year, put us in a much better position this year. Otherwise, we would be talking about reducing our budget another one point one million dollars. And that is included going forward. So it was very, very helpful. We appreciate it, but we want the community to understand, it didn't end the problem. It helped it quite a bit, but it did not solve the problem completely. It was a band-aid. The executive budget summary and the impact then on the tax levy overall. Our, our plan right now for our revenues other than the tax levy is that they will go up about five point one percent total. So that is an increase in those reimbursable aids, the other aids that we will see coming into the district. Our unrestricted foundation aid, so that amount that I just mentioned to you, we are anticipating going up two hundred seventy eight thousand dollars. Now, the executive proposal right now only has us going up about a hundred forty thousand dollars. We're planning on, in the state budget process, it only going up two hundred seventy eight thousand dollars total. So on April tenth, you might not see a dramatic change in our proposal to you at all, different than previous years, because frankly, we've already banked on it. I really hope that as the budget is passed by the state, that we see at least that amount, if not more, if more, then we can have a different conversation. But in all likelihood, again, we're only going to see a small increase in that. And then the amount of the fund balance used for a tax levy, we're looking to increase that about fifty thousand dollars again to help close that gap. Overall, then, we have to increase the tax levy at the cap number, two point three six percent then to make up the difference. So again, I think a relatively small tax increase of just two point three percent. And an important one, important to make up the difference, but it's at our cap numbers as well. So we are not exceeding the cap, not putting anybody in that type of jeopardy. I want to talk to you a little bit about the impact of the reassessment. It's a really complicated topic that we'd like to explain to the community, because many people, all of you, myself included, got letters that explained to us, actually, a year ago first, saying your taxes, your tax, taxable amount, your assessed value will go up in the tax. In, in the total assessable value across the entire community. So just about everybody probably feels as though they saw an increase in what the value of their home is being assessed at. The idea behind this was that we haven't had a full reassessment in the community or reevaluation in quite a long time. And that people's home values probably fell behind what their actual values were, or some people, they were too high. Some people, having bought their homes more recently, probably had a value based more on their market value, so it was closer to what the actual value is than somebody, than somebody that may have bought their home quite a while ago. But a few key terms in understanding this, our tax levy, that is the amount of money that the board, you, can raise in taxes when you sign that warrant in August. And our community is voting on our spending plan and the total amount of money that you can collect, not on a rate. So in other words, you're simply voting on the pot of money that's to be collected from the community. You are voting as a community whether to buy a large pizza in taxes, a small pizza in taxes, whatever the amount is, not on how it's divided up. We don't assess properties. We don't determine values. We have nothing to do with that at all. The total taxable value in the community is given to us by the office of the assessor, the town assessor. They set the values. The rate for us is simply a mathematical calculation, based on your property value, of what share of the total you are going to be responsible for. And again, the way taxes work and the way this is divided up is you pay more taxes if your home is valued more than others. And so when people's assessments have gone up, the concern is among the community, the people will pay a lot more in taxes. Well, in total, the community is going to pay the same amount. The individual taxpayer, though, will be impacted by the change in whatever their assessment is. So if they have concerns about their assessment, they need to be talking to the town, to the assessor's office, and certainly making a claim, as many, many people in the community have, around what the actual value of their property may be. Again, you set simply the levy, the total amount to be collected. The town calculates the value, or what the share that each person has to pay out of that total amount. It's not something that we are responsible for. Certainly something that we then end up, in a sense, benefiting from when the taxes come in. But we do not set a rate, because the rate then would end up raising, because the assessed values could end up raising more money. You are only voting to, no matter what somebody's value is, the total amount of money is what's going to be collected by the district. So any kind of conversation that might be about, well, will the taxing entity, us or the town, take advantage of increased values? No, we're still only permitted to tax exactly what community members agree to when they vote in May. And your tax bill then is your rate times your home value by the thousand and whatever your assessment may be, again, set by the town. So what does this mean in our community? So our tax levy, we're proposing an increase of two point three six percent. That doesn't mean everybody's tax bill from one year to the next is going up two point three six percent. In previous years, it would have. Going forward, though, in this particular year, and likely the year after, because an additional change in people's assessed value over a two-year period, there will be a variety of changes for people based on how their own home value increased in the assessment. We would hope consequently, there would be people that also see then reductions if their value is going down. It depends entirely on, again, the value of your home. So just to walk you through what that might mean a little bit and the actual impact, there's also an equalization rate, and that's set by the state of New York, the Office of Real Property Tax, to make sure people are paying an equal amount of taxes, even though their homes are valued and assessed differently from one town to the next. What we're anticipating right now in the town of Brighton is that the percent of levy will be ninety eight point seven percent. The equalization rate then will be eighty nine percent. And for example, as an assessment, if a home is valued at two hundred thousand dollars, that the tax rate will be under this formula, twenty seven point six, twenty seven dollars sixty cents per thousand. Excuse me, the tax bill then being five thousand five hundred twenty dollars. In two thousand nineteen, what we'd be looking at, if we get to a hundred percent evaluation, I'm sorry, a hundred percent equalization rate, the example assessment, it went from two hundred to two hundred twenty two thousand dollars. That means the rate is going down, because it's the rate per thousand. Again, the rate gets adjusted. We're only still collecting the same amount of money. So your rate goes down, because if we kept you at the same rate, if we kept you at twenty seven dollars sixty cents on two hundred twenty two thousand dollars, it would raise way too much money. We'd be charging you too much. We don't want to do that. That's not what we're doing. So we can reduce the rate, because the taxable amount is bigger. Your tax bill then is only going up a hundred twenty eight dollars, which consequently is the approximately two point three six percent, because that's all you're supposed to be paying in an increase. Town of Pittsburgh is at a hundred percent valuation. Their tax bill will go up a hundred seventy six dollars, and we have a small amount of properties in the town of Pittsburgh. The current balance right now in the capital reserve fund, and this is one of the proposals that we would like to make to you, is to look at eight point five million dollars, I'm sorry, the current balance is eight point five million dollars, and we'd be suggesting a withdrawal of one point five million dollars to reauthorize the TCMS Chiller project. This was a project that was given authorization several years ago, but because bids came in too high, we weren't able to do it at the time. We do need to make this replacement. We would like to construct alterations, renovations, improvements, each of the existing school buildings and facilities as well. We'd like to be looking at security enhancements appropriate for each of the buildings, using some of the reserve funds to do that. Interior and exterior hardware in all district buildings, flooring windows, and structural rehabilitation, that is frankly perhaps overdue at Brookside, to continue to maintain that building. Also, the additional transfer of capital reserve funds to our facility improvement plan, so that we can reduce that debt. So this is that planning towards the future, which we can't go as quickly with, but we still are doing something in that area. We'll be able to maintain the tax impact that was presented to community members last year. So when they approve this project, we'd like to make sure we're fulfilling that promise overall, that the tax impact, not just the total dollar amount they approved, but the tax impact that we estimated, that we can stay in that same place. And then the acquisition installation and, and around the foregoing improvements of the original furnishings, equipment, machinery, and apparatus. So in other words, to be able to do more work around the buildings that needs to get done, that way it can't, it won't have to come out of the general fund, but out of this capital reserve fund, so out of our savings account. Likewise, the technology reserve fund, one point five million dollars in, we'd like to spend five hundred thousand dollars to continue with the addition of instructional hardware. Again, we've slowed in this area somewhat, and this is not coming out of general fund, and this money can't go towards other things. It can only go towards technology. So if community members have any kind of concern around technology, the conversation is which type of technology or how. But not necessarily the amount of money or the fact that we are spending on technology, because either way, we need to implement technology plans and instructional technology. The question always internally for us is measuring the quality of how we're doing that and the success of those programs in, in working through that. Eighth-grade tablets, we'll continue the one-to-one program at the secondary level, so now we have eighth graders next year who will continue to go over. We'll have ninth and tenth graders next year with one-to-one, and we'll have eighth graders again with that implemented for next year. Our district infrastructure, wireless, closet switches, cabling upgrades, et cetera, all need to be continued to support it through the technology reserve fund. Storage for our virtual servers, laptop replacements, this is part of the cost of doing business, again, part of professionally, how we support working classrooms. Staff laptops are the only device that that person is using, so in other words, they don't have a standalone station and a laptop. People come and go, use those machines all the time. They work quite a bit with them outside the classroom, and then it's mobile within their classroom. CAD lab replacement at the high school, device replacements, K through seven. We don't have a one-to-one environment, we're not planning on having that. We do have a significant number of devices, though, probably a two-to-one environment in many cases, but we have to replace those on a regular cycle. And then audiovisual hardware replacements as well. We are asking to also withdraw one hundred twenty five thousand dollars from bus purchase reserve that was established several years ago. It currently has two hundred thousand dollars in it. This was established when we were looking at potentially taking on some contract transportation, which presented itself as not feasible over time. This money was put aside in previous budgets. However, we're very excited about this idea of purchasing three-passenger vans, fourteen-passenger vans, one of which would be accessible for all students, so made handicap accessible. And it could be used by the transition program at St. John Fisher College, field trips, co-curricular activities, and there's classic athletics, small teams that does not require CDL license to drive that vehicle. This could reduce some of our contract transportation expense, but provides our staff with a tremendous amount of flexibility for running programs and being able to transport students in those passenger vans. We're very excited about that idea and the potential for that withdrawal. We're also looking at putting on the ballot an initiative establishing a home-to-school eligibility distance, and we have a couple of different ways for you to look at this. One is currently, we have a walking distance of one quarter of a mile at the grades kindergarten and two levels. So in other words, if you live outside of a quarter mile, you are to get transportation. The reality is that the way our streets are and the zones that we've set up and the busyness of some traffic, we're really picking up for about an eighth of a mile. And so we'd like to change that zone down to a smaller distance to make sure that we're correctly accounting for kids that we, in all likelihood, are already actually picking up at many stops. Grades three through five, we currently have a quarter-mile zone, so outside of a quarter mile, you are provided transportation. Within a quarter mile, you're asked to, to walk inside of a quarter mile. Grade six through twelve, we have a three, currently, we have a quarter mile for grade six, even though they're at the middle school, three-quarters of a mile, seven through twelve. It is an inconsistent practice that likely has survived since the days of having seven through twelve kids seven through twelve kids together, or seventh and eighth graders in particular buildings, and not having middle schools, which would have been a long, long time ago. These can only change based on voter approval. So, it just has never been put back on a ballot. And the way the law works is it has to go on a ballot to get approval. We're simply, in this proposal, asking to make the walk distance the same for sixth graders as it is for seventh and eighth graders. Seems to be a pretty simple choice to make and affects relatively, a relative small number of, of students. Many of our sixth graders at that distance are walking anyways, or like many of the kids coming to the middle school, provided transportation from mom, dad, grandma, grandpa, uncle, aunt, or whoever else is in the parking lot in the morning. So, we are looking to make this more consistent. In terms of eligibility then, what does that do, the number of students at a quarter mile? There are twenty-one students, so ineligible at the three-quarter mile distance, it would bump that up then to a hundred and eleven, so an increase there. The seven through eight, if we were to make any changes there, we would be, I'm sorry, seven and eight would stay the same as well. So, the total for TCMS goes up by the number of sixth graders, right here. And in total, then, we have a small number of students impacted, but it's provided with more consistency. Now, there are two different scenarios. We could look at a walk zone of up to a mile. And we did take a look at this analysis. The problem is that it would only likely impact another seventy or so students, but because we still need the buses for French Road and Council Rock, we would not be able to reduce the number of buses that we are using. So, in other words, we would inconvenience more families and more students, and yet we would achieve no cost savings. However, what's important to point out is this may, over time, happen. Because when we go to full-day kindergarten, we will need more buses. If we can use buses then from the high school run at that time, and the way times might work out, we might be able to make some changes here, simply and achieve that by increasing this distance. So, I guess this is a preview of things to come. This year, we're going to ask to make consistency among sixth through twelve at three quarters of a mile going forward. So, it's not different for sixth graders, but in the future, we may be coming back and asking the community to go up to a mile, which was supported in the budget survey, by the way, by most families. Likely not families that are, would be losing that, but by most families as well. So, the summary, this is a total spending proposal of seventy-eight point three-three million dollars, or up two point nine-five percent in total spending. Again, under three percent, trying to stay at a place that we think is very reasonable and maintain program, excellent programming right now that is working for our kids. Responsibility controls increase in spending, and we don't believe harms the current educational program. It does not allow us to grow in ways that we would like to. However, it maintains the excellence that we're at right now, and that's a good, good thing in this current climate. Reflects our continuing investment in the blueprint priorities, safety, security, wellness, rigorous coursework for all students, creativity, innovation, instructional technology, diversity and equity. It is also tax cap compliant, with just a two point three percent increase in the proposed tax levy. The next steps will be to assess the final budget adopted by the state on April first, March thirtieth, April first, thirty-first, April first. We will come back to you then and provide any updates on April tenth, and ask you to adopt a budget for the community to consider. We have a hearing on May eighth, and then the budget vote and the spaghetti dinner on the fifteenth. Come on a spaghetti dinner, get your tickets and come and go. Any questions?
Kevin, what I want to say is, I know this budget will be adjusted when the state budget comes out. In my mind, you and Lou and Debbie and the whole staff have done a terrific job from what we saw way in the beginning. I mean, it's, it's, I don't know, I guess I could call it magic, you know, because I certainly couldn't do something like that, but you guys are just terrific.
Well, thank you. Everybody in this room and under Lou's leadership to get here financially, to find ways to do this. You know, and keeping in mind, a lot of people are going to provide a heck of a lot of flexibility to get there. So, finding staffing within buildings to still do the things we'd like to do is a good practice that we should be doing no matter what, but it does stretch people in different ways. It doesn't allow a program to grow exactly the way we would like to. It means putting the pause button on certain things, which in an organization that's very innovative and we're trying to do new things, is a challenge, but it's also reflective of what the community needs us to do. And so, we recognize that. So, it's certainly a lot of creativity, but, but understanding that impact of delaying some of that future planning too, that we will have to come back to and talk about in future budgets. But I really appreciate you pointing that out. And again, a compliment to everybody here who's finding ways to do more with less, and Lou finding strategies for us to do that in ways that make sense and maintain program. So, thank you.
Well, and Kevin, as you point out, one of the things is that we talk about this all the time, and many, many of our residents pay attention. You know, the budget work, the planning, is a year-round, ongoing, everyday activity and effort. And one of the things that we will continue to remind folks who live in the Brighton Central School District, we are, all of us who own property and pay taxes are really burdened to a greater extent than the state should be allowing to have happen. Sixty-seven percent of our revenue comes from local, local property taxes. And if the state were to own up to its obligation under the foundation aid formula, we could reduce that levy substantially. And we should be doing that, and the state should be doing that. We continue to make those efforts. I will, again, as Marv said, thank everybody. To some folks, it seems like a challenge that every year we work through these things. It is a challenge, and every year, we work through these things. And what you're proposing and presenting to us tonight is a recommended budget that depending upon what the final outcome is in Albany, we may likely be at this number. I mean, you've, you've assumed, Lou and you, you and Lou have assumed a number that looks like, from what we're reading from the Senate and the Assembly, may end up being pretty close to the number. So, we may be pretty much right there. But we do want to remind residents that all of the material on the budget, much of it is posted, the updates will be posted online. We have about a three-week period now, April tenth, where we convene. And at that point, we need to adopt a budget. We'll go ahead and take input, seek input. We'll be doing a lot of budget presentations, not only at the individual buildings, but in community groups around Brighton. If folks read about our budget, happen to view this meeting and the budget update on our YouTube channel through the archives, please feel free to send us comments and questions and contact Kevin or Lou directly, or send it to me on behalf of the board, and we will, we will get back to you. But we are looking for input. We're looking to make sure as many residents as possible pay attention, so that when we do call for the vote in May, that everyone is well-informed at that time to come out and vote. So, we'll continue to communicate, we'll continue to have discussion and dialogue. And we thank you for the presentation tonight, and again, for everyone's efforts putting it together. We also offer, as I mentioned, now that the budget presentation has been done, another opportunity for public participation. Any members of the public wish to address the board, seeing that we have none raising their hands right at this point in time? We will look forward to that participation at a future meeting date. Do we have anything else this evening, members of the board? Dr. McGowan, any further matters of business? Then I remind folks, prior to adjournment, we will reconvene here on April tenth for our scheduled budget adoption meeting that evening. So, may I please have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the employment of particular individuals?
Go move.
Second. Moved by Marv, seconded by Larry. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, we're adjourned, folks, thank you very much.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.